Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting in the Montague County Board of Education order. We're asked for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna take this opportunity to recognize National School Psychology Week. And during this week, on November 6th through the 10th, 2023, schools throughout the United States will celebrate National School Psychology Week to highlight the important work school psychologists and other educators do to help all students thrive. This year's theme is "Let's Grow Together." The theme recognizes every aspect of growth as fundamental to effective learning environments and to school psychologist's role in supporting students' well-being and learning. We are fortunate in Montague County to have a school psychologist assigned to every building. Angela Hayes, Montague County School Director of Psychological Services and Student Intervention, is with us tonight. On behalf of the board, thank you for your work, the work that you do, you and your team do, to support our students, families, and school communities.
Mr. President, Angela is here. I know she brought a couple members of her team with her, and I'd like her to introduce those folks and have them be recognized as well. So Angela, if you wanted to talk, could you go to the podium so we can get this recorded?
Yeah, thanks for inviting us tonight. I'm Angela Hayes, and I am proud to have two members of our group of 12, so we're a proud department of 12. But tonight, we have Kaylee Becker, and she's a school psychologist at Brookhaven Elementary School and Mountaineer Middle School. We also have Tess Watson. She is at University High School the majority of her time, also at the Excel Center, supporting students over there. So yeah, this is the slogan for National School Psychology Week this year, and such a prime time to realizing how supporting students takes all of us, to grow together, and recognizing that students and everybody kind of grow at their own pace. It really takes a community to have a great educational environment. So we're so proud to be in Mon County Schools and to work together is really a well-oiled machine. So I'm really proud of the psychological department. It wouldn't be for Student Services and the board to support a really well-rounded department. So appreciate that. Do you girls wanna say anything? I told them that it'll be early in the board meetings, so they'll be able to maybe go have dinner together or something. Yeah, appreciate everything that you support us to support the students.
Oh, alright. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you all.
Again, that's November 6th through the 10th. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Nancy Snyder, a former teacher's aide at Cheat Lake Elementary who passed away on October 12th. A moment of silence, please. Superintendent, I did see a delegation. Tonight, we have Sean Young, and the concern is EV charging stations contract awarding. And I'm going to, I'm gonna read the text at the top in case you didn't get a chance to read this, because it's very important. Speakers are required to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect to the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While does not our intent to stifle public comments, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you will be held legally, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult your legal advisor. Again, the delegation is Sean Young, and it's about EV charging stations contract awarding. Sean?
Well, I want to thank President Lidle and all the board. After hearing you talk at IMTEC about the Renaissance Academy, I'm definitely excited for that. I think you guys are going in a good direction. So my name is Sean Young, and I serve as the president of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 596, and as a labor trustee on the Clarksburg Electrical Joint Apprenticeship Training Committee. The Clarksburg Electrical JATC oversees the region's DOL registered electrical apprenticeship program and provides additional training opportunities for our members. I represent just over 370 electrical workers in north-central West Virginia, including 57 electricians currently residing in Mon County. I'm here today regarding the EV bus charging station project to advocate not only for the members I represent, but the contractors who partner with us. Several of our members have completed the Electrical Vehicle Infrastructure Training Program, including the 20-hour course and 90-minute exam required to become EVITP certified. In fact, Mon Valley Electric presently employs four of these electricians and is eligible to quickly hire any of the others if they choose. Not only does Mon Valley Electric meet the requirement listed in the project specs to employ EVITP certified technicians, they have met additional criteria to become an EVITP-approved contractor and are listed on the EVITP website. Our partner contractors draw their workforce exclusively from area residents. As our local has been continuously serving north-central West Virginia since 1917, I can attest that any contractors partnering with us have access to the most experienced workforce in the area with a low turnover rate. Mon Valley Electric has participated heavily in our bona fide five-year apprenticeship program, exceeding the four-year apprenticeship training program minimum required to receive a preferential scoring for this contract. In fact, a Mon Valley Electric employee currently serves as a business trustee and the chair of the JATC. Anyone referred to work through our hall must submit to pre-employment and annual drug screening, along with safety training. Our partnering contractors pride themselves in providing unmatched hospitalization and pension benefits to their employees, and anyone working on this project for one of our contractors will receive insurance premiums paid entirely by the employer, along with the additional hourly contributions to a health savings account. Furthermore, our partner contractors fund both a defined contribution pension and a defined benefit pension for their employees. I understand that DC America is a division of Dixon Electrical Systems, another one of our industry partners, and an EVITP-approved contractor as well. If awarded this contract, they will have access to the same workforce and provide the same benefits as Mon Valley Electric. I highly recommend awarding this contract to one of these two partnering contractors to ensure the success the Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Training Program was designed to deliver. I'm not here in any way to demean or attack the apparent low bidder for this project. I simply believe that contractors that utilize our workforce best meet the awarty qualifications as laid out in the resolution adopted by Mon County Schools, as well as in the project specs. And should any other contractor be interested in partnering with the IBW, they will gain access to our EVITP certified electricians and can receive credit for participation in the bona fide apprenticeship program. We're always thrilled to work with and endorse, as I am tonight, any contractor that would employ our members. So thank you.
Okay. Superintendent reports discussions and follow-up action.
First, first, we're gonna, we have some guests here tonight to talk to us about the University High School Sports Complex Capital Campaign, so I'm gonna turn it over to those folks.
If I had known there were, there was gonna be a podium, I would've brought a stool. I have them all throughout my house. My name is Heidi Matheny. It's my husband Greg and Trey Dunham. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak about this, this project. We've recently dragged Trey into this with us, not kicking and screaming, but we're here to talk about this complex and, and our progress with it and the importance of it. But we started actively about a year ago, really moving forward with our campaign, our capital campaign. But how Greg and I got involved is we have three, three boys, two of which are university high graduates, an eighth grader about to head to UHS, and they all play sports. Sports has been important to our family and our boys, and we recognize that, how important sports are for the youth, especially in, in Mon County. But we got involved about a year ago, and, and if you want to talk about what we've done up to this point.
Well, initially, this, this, the process of this started back in now 2017, when our son was a, our middle son was a freshman in high school. And when he initiated playing high school baseball, we assumed that he'd be playing at University High and traveling on Myron Park and so forth, on a bus and riding over and enjoying the experience of high school baseball. And we realized that soon thereafter that, you know, it was, it was, you know, it was kind of disappointing when, you know, you didn't have the opportunity to play on campus. And, and not that, Myron Park's a great experience and it's a great opportunity, but we just feel it's important for children to, our youth, to be able, if the opportunity presents itself, to play on their campuses. And so that initiated me at that time to work with the Mills Group. At that time, I said, well, you know what? I know they have this great space up at University High School. There's this, you know, awesome complex up there, and this, this great space. And so initiated a, at that point, a conceptual of what the baseball field might look like at University High School. And we worked with the Mills Group, happened to work with an architect at the Mills Group that was a university high graduate, Ryan Hess, and he was very excited and very motivated to get involved on, and to be a part of that, and was so thankful that he could be a part of something like that. So we initiated that, created the conceptual, and it kind of just sat for a while, for personal reasons, in our family. And then about a year ago, we decided that it was time to kind of kick it back up again. And at that point in time, we went back to the Mills Group, and that's when we kind of worked with them in creating the, what you see on the board, which is the, the website that is associated. If you've not been to it, that's UHSsportscomplex.com. And you can kind of see the conceptual and see what the vision of, of the fields are. And, and I thought at that time, at that point in time, the best person to put forth as the chairperson was my beautiful wife Heidi, and so from there, she kind of took that and started running with it. And one of the things we quickly, quickly realized is that the great, one of the things we had an opportunity of is that because of University High sitting on a reclamation site, that we thought that that would be an opportunity to pursue grants associated with reclamation sites from previous mining sites. And I'll let her speak to that.
So we, we initiated the, the project, and actually, in a meeting with President Lidle, we said, hmm, I wonder if that sits on any old mining land? And made a couple of calls and found out that yes, in fact, it, it does sit on old reclaimed mining land. And the good news was, we did qualify to apply for the grant. The bad news was, we had 30 days to apply for the grant. And the other bad news was, it was a very competitive grant. But there is this program, we did apply, I think we did make the shortlist, the governor ultimately makes that decision. We did not, we were not awarded the monies this year, but we did go ahead and reapply for next year. And we, we kind of shifted our focus a little bit on our second application based on some of the projects that were awarded last year. We, we saw what it was that they're really looking for, so we shifted our focus on our second application. second application, but we will know in March if we will get any activity on that. And we asked for the, go big or go home. We asked for the whole amount for the project, but we initially started out, and this is Greg's expertise, but we initially started out with this vision of turf fields, which gave us a really big number that we had to achieve. You see how beautiful that the, that the schematic is and how beautiful the fields will be. Greg went to a tournament with our youngest in Pennsylvania, and the tournament was at a beautiful complex with grass fields. And he said, "We can do this. It's just as nice, and if we want to later put in turf fields, we can, we can do that, but it's just as nice." So, that saves a significant amount of money, so that, we kind of changed our direction in that aspect as well.
And I want to, and if you don't mind, I want to thank you, the board, and speaking also, to thank the board, because at that time, I think it was over, just over a year ago when the fund was created, and we, there were board members that participated, and we want to thank you, the board-
Mr. Kelly.
-for stepping up and, you know, initiating that fund. And we, we certainly realized at that point, we had your support. And so, you know, that's what prompted us to move in a little quicker and a little faster, because now we had the board on, the board, so to speak, on board and with us, and we certainly appreciated that. We, because we worked on the Amler Grant, and we put a lot of focus on the Amler Grant, and hoped, had hoped we would get it, and we did. We got, we felt like we were right, we were, you know, right on the shortlist, but when it didn't happen, we started, we have started, we said, "Okay, we'll reapply," but you can't, because you can't. But then we also, we decided it was time maybe to move in another direction as well, and we started the cap, a capital campaign. And that's what we're really here for, is to talk to you about the capital campaign. And that's where Mr. Dunham got involved and supporting that, and what we, what you should have and should have been presented to you is a brochure that kind of outlines the capital campaign, and some of that relates to some naming rights to the complex and what we're hoping to be able to have some support through our business community and supporting it through naming rights of different aspects of, of the complex. And that's really, you know, at this point, we wanted to kind of share that and kind of, kind of just, you know, kind of let you know where we're going to go. We can continue to work on the Amler Grant, we're going to kind of kick off a capital campaign, and, and the hopes that we can kind of create, create some additional momentum. We think that we have some momentum at this point in time. I've met with some local excavation companies on the site that is in, that has indicated that they have an interest in participating and perhaps in some in-kind work. We, so we're kind of hopeful for some of those things, and, and at the same time, there's been some budgets created that we think that with those budgets that we've, that we have, and with the support of our capital campaign, that we can start to get to a position of possibly being able to kick us off sooner than later, and that's really, that's what the, the real goal of it all. Trey, if you want to speak to some of the stuff that you put together in the brochure?
Yeah, so my background's a little bit in marketing and communication, so that's when I met the Mathenys and kind of heard about what they're working on. They asked me if I'd kind of give them some help with fundraising side of it. So, the plan really was to create, present the vision for this as something that's going to benefit the community, benefit students, give them, you know, an on-campus site that they can have their, their practices. And, you know, you can see the plan also includes a tennis facility there as well as softball and baseball. Obviously can be used during the, during the day and during the week by the, by the UHS faculty. So, really create a vision that this is, this is a community space, can be used on the weekends for community activities. But really, when you're communicating, important to present, what's, what's the vision, what's the benefit for this, for the youth of the community? So, we, we kind of put together this brochure with, again, with the vision. The plan really is, it's a four-phase plan, as, and these are all kind of general ideas, broad strokes, things change as you know as you go through these various projects, but kind of a four-phase site development, building fields, courts, concession stands, dugouts, fencing, lighting, interiors. But really to try to present to various community donors, businesses, et cetera, that this is kind of the steps that we would be taking to, to bring this vision to reality. With that, obviously for most companies to be motivated to give to these kind of things, this is a tremendous PR opportunity for them to show their, their appreciation, care, involvement in the community, and so that's where maybe something like naming rights and that, that type of thing would come in, just to provide them some sort of benefit, some sort of recognition for their involvement and investment in the local youth in the high school there. So, you can see kind of on the page four, I think it is, or kind of towards the end, again, just broad strokes, rough ideas, you know, certainly open to interpretations, kind of our first swing at it in terms of what could be named and the amounts for that. Also some other benefits, we have some, you know, some pretty high-profile, I would say, what we're calling ambassadors, folks who are, are kind of behind this. The board is certainly being part of that, but Chad Jerko, who played at UHS and played for the St. Louis Cardinals for a number of years, is behind this and has indicated he'd be, you know, willing to speak on behalf of that and support this. Rich Bram, who has a son in, just came out of the program, and other kids at UHS have said, "Hey, I'll come out and support this." And so there may be opportunities for them to, to meet with corporate donors, to express their support, to assist them in, you know, PR-type campaigns for, on behalf of these, these companies. So, again, these are just kind of our initial ideas and thoughts and kind of in terms of brainstorming, how might we go about involving, you know, various corporations to, to be in support of this, as well as, you know, Amler Grants and, you know, there's smaller kind of donations from families and things like that that would also add into this. But with a project this size, you really need probably some corporate, corporate backing. So, that's kind of the plan, that's kind of what we're thinking, but obviously we're here to, you know, to fill you all in and answer any questions, and if there's a different direction we should be going, this would be a good time to kind of figure that out, so we're not headed too far down the road, you know, and needing to re-track and, and kind of go a different way. So, I hope that kind of everything, makes everything clear. It's a, it's a basic capital, capital campaign. I don't think there's too much complexity to it, but I guess we just opened it if you all had any, any questions or thoughts.
I did have one other comment that I wanted to point out, and as you look at the conceptual, one of the things when we first, when we looked, when we were doing this, and I sat down with the Mills Group, I wanted to be ensured, you know, that we illustrated the opportunity for all teams, many team sports. And one of the things you'll see when you see the, you'll see the cross-country course incorporated into our design. We think that there's a great opportunity to have visual for the people that are, you know, that are across, to come in and watch your children play, watch the country, on the cross-country course. If you've ever been to a cross-country event, you see the parents running back and forth, and we think, we've created some good, good spots to where they can see their kids running through the cross-country course. Obviously, we incorporated tennis. We wanted to ensure that ultimately that tennis could be a part of this. And one of the things that came up here over the last several months is that we really, we came, people came to us and said that the, the band presently uses that, that space for practice. They use those fields for practice. So, one of the things that we said, we looked at, and we met with Mrs. Green, and we talked about it, because we definitely wanted to try to incorporate the band into this as well. And so, you can't see it on the conceptual, but in meeting with the excavators, everybody that's been out to University High at the football fields, you know there's this great big mound, the hill they call it, or whatever it may be, that's next to the field. So, I talked to the excavators, I said, "Hey, you know, there may be a little need for some, especially with the softball field, there may be some need for some fill on the backside of the softball field. What's the possibility of moving that, creating that space and using that space for, for the band, for their practice, practice facility right next to the, the football field?" And they said, "Yeah, absolutely." I think Mrs. Green had gone out and she had done some measurements and measured off some things and so forth, and we do believe that that's a, it's a great space for the band. So, now, you have band, you got tennis, you got baseball, softball, cross-country, and we feel like we've kind of covered a lot of the, the bases to try to, you know, allow all the, the kids to benefit from this, this vision that we have. The last thing I'll mention is that there's also this greater vision. You know, you know, as you guys know, there's 90 acres out there. There's 90 acres that all the way, goes all the way down to the river. So, this is just maybe the first step of many things that could happen, you know, on that land out there. You know, there's thoughts of, you know, doing more, you know, at some point in time. This is just a kickoff, maybe some bike trails, some, some walking trails that are on that 90 acres that touch down to the river, that touches down, touches down to the rail trail. So, you know, our hopes is this, if we could get some momentum and maybe get this moving and get some, you know, something this started, then maybe it kicks off for somebody else to do the next thing, the next thing they're after. And that's really our goal and our hope as a vision, as a family, that, you know, this might be the starting point, and that's all it is, it's a starting point of many things. I think we would all love that. I would hope, I know that's what, everyone, all your hearts are, and I know we'd all love to see that happen out there, so. Any, I'll open it up to, to questions.
I just had a comment, I was pleased to hear you say you're going to incorporate the band, because that's a lot of band members.
Yep.
And that's a lot of, I mean, you get the band involved, that's that much more soldiers you have working towards this total project. And so, if you, you give them something worth really looking at, then you've got a whole nother nugget that you can pull from. Sure.
I was going to ask about that land reclamation project, a grant that you applied for, all or nothing, which is a brilliant idea. Go for it all. If it falls short, would they say, "Well, we're not going to give you 4 million," but is it all or nothing? Or can they, can we get 2 million? Could you get, not we, you, could you get 2 million?
Well, historically, the projects that apply, they don't get the whole amount that they have asked for, which is why I asked for it all, because-
Right, great.
-we would take whatever they, they would give us. So, and when I reapplied, I asked for the same amount, but most likely you don't get that whole amount. And I, I did have to show that in the budget where other monies would potentially be coming from. And that's another thing, we have until, right now, we have a lot of in-kind support and activity that we really want to capitalize on. We have a lot of movement with that, with excavating and building, and if I can show Amler some of that by January, that will definitely help us in their eyes that this is a serious project and that we have a lot of community support. So, that's our goal with that, that coming here, that we, we hope to garner your support for the project and that you talk about it, think about it, and tell people about it and get excited about it for us. It's a beautiful campus over at UHS.
Absolutely.
Lots of space. We travel a lot with sports, and we go to different schools, and they all have baseball fields, they all have football fields, and just the excitement for a student to be able to play, have, have their families come to their field, play on their own field, host games on their field. I think that's an important aspect of, of high school. So, we're, we're passionate about this. We have four more years, four more years of passion.
I will, I will say though, that although we do travel, I don't know if I, you know, and you guys, we can, I want to attest this, there's not a beautiful, beautiful view and campus on a Friday night out there at a ball, at a game or what, it's, it, you know, especially this weekend, it's, it's magnificent, it's magnificent, and we want to show it off. You know, we want to show it off, and what we're doing here, we just want to do something special, something beautiful that continues to show off that, that beautiful, that beautiful site and location.
Well, you know, I've only been on for just a little over a year, but is there, has this been discussed that we could give some money for this?
It has been discussed. Wherever we started.
You're going to make me ask, or you're going to tell me? I mean, have we, have we, do we have any money to give?
We have no money to give specifically to that project right now would be the answer to that.
Okay.
We'd, we'd have to budget that within the next, you know, if that's, if that's something this board decided they want to do, then we'd have to budget that for, for a future budget.
One thing I will say is that when you talk about budget, the board budgeting something, when that school was built, the school, school board, Mike, Mike, Mr. Kelly and Nancy, me and Ms. Walker was, was on the board at that time and did the, the earthwork for all these fields. This is not a new vision for University High School. This is a vision that has been a vision for that school for a long time, and there's been a lot of people pick this torch up, and they run with it for a couple, couple months, it seems like to me, and then they drop it. So, I'm going to say, Heidi, you have stuck with this. I've been talking, it's been over two years since that meeting, so the fact that you're still pushing for it speaks to, to your determination to make this happen.
To my annoying personality, is that what you want to say?
I know you will. And I, when you, when you called me about it, that's when we met, it was, it was, I thought that this is something can happen, but it's something the community, University High School community has to buy into this project, the whole entire community has to buy into this project for this to happen, and, and that's part of Greg's vision of, of everything else coming together. The school system put a lot of money in dirt, dirt work here. And over the years, I've had people walk up to me in restaurants and say, "If you guys weren't such idiots, I would give you, I have $750,000 I want to give you guys for a girl's softball field." So, I went to see, at that time was Dr. Devonhoun, and I said, I said, Frank, I said, "What's going on?" It was unfunded, others' projects at University High School, and it's changed the way this board deals with, with athletic facilities. It used to be people would promise something, like, there's some promises made, so we'd do it, where the school puts the money out, builds a facility, the promises go away, and then we have egg on our face. So, we, as, and I've had people give me cussings, and they're pretty impressive ones, that, why didn't I trust them? They said their money would be good. I said, "You need to take the money down to the board office, write the check, and give it to Beth Harvey." At the time, she was the, she was the person that runs the, the money collection, because we as a board and we as a school system can't fund based on hypothetical money. We have to, we're, I mean, we, that would be taxpayer, you know, it would be, it would be bad board membership to do that. So, what we did was, we, I told the people that said they had $750,000, I said, "Would you please just take it down?" And I got, personally went to Frank at the time, and got them to forget about the 10% University High School was always a penalty. When you guys raised money, 10% went to pay off football field, historically, a little bit of history lesson for everyone in the room. And at that time, the board members and the superintendent said, "If you get $750,000 for a softball field, we'll build that softball field starting immediately. Get the money down to Beth and we'll do it." Not a penny showed up, not a penny. So, when this, when you kicked this off, and I was sitting in a board meeting, and I, and the reason I did it was, it was just, it was the, well, one, I want to give to University High School, but it was just the idea of the process. Everyone says, "I don't know how to give University High School's athletic facilities." So, I said, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it in a board meeting." So, I literally wrote the check, handed it to Beth in the board meeting, and showed people exactly how you do this. So, it's a process to get to where we're going, and when we start getting buy-in, we need people with solid buy-in. And Mike, Mike was, said, "I'll match it," at the same time. So, that was, it was a, it was a good feeling for a good start, but I still don't have people handing money in for University High School capital contributions, capital facilities. And sometimes people don't understand the difference between the boosters and the capital campaign. The idea that the boosters fund uniforms, food, whatever for the athletes. Capital campaign is specifically for facilities and upgrades, so that's what that's for. So, it's a long way to say, and it's a long way, and I'm going to tell you, as, with everything I have, that I'm behind you guys. It's my intention to be behind you guys, and as Dan asked about, does the school system have money? I, I have a 20% vote that says we can do something, but as far as to say that the school system would fund it moving forward, we can't do that. There's certain allowances for each school that we give each year, and that school decides what they want to do with the money that they're given. It's not very much money, it's when we start talking about projects like this, so. I'm behind you. I think you have the buy-in of, of, obviously with, with Ms. Green sitting, Mrs. Green sitting here in the room, you have her buy-in. She wants this to happen. The, the school system, when, when a, when a school was built, they wanted this to happen. That's why they did all the dirt work, that's why they got everything ready for this. So, this is the next step, it's been 12 years? How long has University High been out there?
15.
15 years? It's not, I don't, yeah, it's time.
It's time.
Nancy, Nancy was on that, she'll, you want a history lesson? Nancy is here, and she knows, I mean, she, I've been with her, and we've, we've talked this stuff over through time, and I've had good friends give me an ear beating, and I take them. And it has everything to do with athletics and funding of athletics, so we got to make sure as this process goes along, we have your back. We also need you guys to take, it sounds like you're going to do it, take a step forward, get this out, get this in, get this in the press. University High School needs this to happen. The school system needs this to happen. Those kids need this to happen. And let's, let's, let's go.
Well, since you're not going to write me a $5 million check tonight, I guess I will ask for- I will ask for support, um, that, uh, that what, what we need moving forward, that maybe, that we have the board's support, um, maybe as little roadblocks, I want to say as possible, but, um, just support, talk about it. If you know somebody, if you know somebody in Charleston that, uh, could potentially have a decision with the grant, um, and who gets the grant, maybe start talking to people there. I guess we also need that kind of support, not just financial, that kind of buzz about it, that, to, to help us keep the momentum.
And I, I'll give her credit. She's not a grant writer, but she did an outstanding job her first time of writing for a grant.
Well, Nicole.
And I, we do appreciate.
Nicole helped me tremendously.
But I will say that if you know of any other federal grants or even state grants or something that may be associated with these things that you've, that you're aware of. And, uh, I know she's, she's a pickle. She's going to go after it and she's going to get it in and she's going to get it done. So, uh, you know, so that's another area if, you know, that, uh, there's areas that we're missing that we may not be aware of or know of something that's out there. You come across something that would, uh, you know, we, I, I know she'll, she'll go to work and, uh, try to make that happen too.
So as I'm sitting here listening to this, I'm thinking that probably next steps for us, and just want to run this by you, maybe threefold. One, I think a press release, some sort of kind of get, get the word out that this is actually officially kicking off and, you know, having the board maybe be a part of some sort of an event. Might be, might be a first step.
Teresa's a really good contact for that.
Yeah.
She is our press person, so.
So, so putting out something, uh, like that. The second one would be perhaps to, and we, we've kind of touched base with the various teams and coaches and, and folks at UHS to let them know, you know, ask them to be ambassadors, but I think including the band in on that. Maybe having an update meeting with, hey, we're kicking this off. This affects all of us. Um, and we need to do the third step, which would be to start, uh, brainstorming leads, uh, essentially. And we've started to do that and some of the, the committee members that you see, uh, on the website have good contacts in, in large, large corporations. We're starting to build that lead list. And then the plan was to kind of put our marketing materials together that you have here. Try to arrange meetings to go and say, hey, we want to sell this to you. We've got the board's support. We're supplying for these grants. We've got in-kind stuff moving forward. Will you come on? Will you fund? Help us get phase one here. You know, that's kind of what we're doing. Get some, at least some practice fields that, that they can use, uh, sooner rather than later. And to start to, to build that lead list and then, and then set up meetings. But in my mind, and I hadn't, just kind of, as I'm sitting here thinking about this, you know, kind of a press release to kind of announce it. This is, this is officially kicking off. Uh, two, to go, to kind of get the team together at UHS, folks who can kind of get the, the UHS community support for that. And then three, starting to build those leads and following the leads up. Um, to kind of, and like, as she said, we, we do have some momentum going forward right now. So try to capitalize on it.
One thing you said also, as you said, I'm sitting here thinking, talking about the scenic overlook, maybe incorporate a scenic overlook into that, just for the trails to kind of tie in with all that. Cause around here, scenery sells. I mean, that's.
Great point.
Yeah. And those are the types of projects that Amler likes, the, the.
Put that in so it's incorporating and connecting to the trail and that future vision. And I think you'll have, I mean, there's going to be some more corporations coming into the industrial part as time goes on. So that, they won't have it built, uh, the first of the year, obviously, but in future, that might be a place to kind of tag into, into some of that money too. But there's, like I said, with the band, there's so many band alumni you're talking about. When they take four busloads of kids to performance, all of those have parents and then they grow up to be parents and they grow up to having funds to be able to donate some. So I said, there's a, should be a good pool there to gain some. And if they get their own practice field, that's, that's huge. We're talking, and Nancy and I walked between those two buildings and mud knee deep.
Yeah.
And I say two buildings is where the cafeteria was, was open space back then. Ms. Green can, can attest to, or attest to how nasty that was in the beginning. So again, getting it all, and it looks like a college campus. It does not look like a, a high school campus. So you're right, it's, it's an easy sell as far as aesthetics. It's a great location and we need to incorporate that view of the, the river and down that valley. It's, it's a great spot.
Absolutely. I'd like to thank you guys for your time. I, the, the one thing, I don't think there's, uh, anything else coming out of the board. I, I talked to, I mean, most important thing here is to make sure that Kim Green is the point on all this. And she's informed in everything that's going on. Um, you know, that's, that's her facility out there as far as her, the man, not her facility. She's, she manages that for us. And, uh, it's very critical that she's, she's kept in the loop on all, all activities. And she's, and she's, uh, uh, behind us too, so.
She's been a great supporter to us for sure.
One, one thing I will, um, remember about the gas well that's, is that marked well? You know where that is back there on the corner? Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if that was clear as far as them moving dirt and everything. We don't want to get into that easement side of it.
I did have one need. Um, the, I know that you said maybe the, the, there's an, you have an architect on staff at, or here at.
She's actually with us tonight.
I do have a, a, a excavating company that's willing to do the civil, uh, work, civil work, in-kind civil work for us. But I just wanted to be sure that once we have that, who do we, you know, just kind of say, okay, who do we need to give, hand this off to? And, uh, as well at that point.
Mrs. Green will have all that. She'll work directly with the administration here in the central office and keep that rolling.
Okay.
I just want to say really quick, the design's beautiful. If that one comes to fruition, just keep those diehard crazy cross-country parents in mind, because normally they would run right through that field. We, to get to that little.
We've heard from them already.
What's that?
Yeah.
The super diehards are going to already be up in the woods and come down, but the majority are going to run right across the field.
Well, he used to be a super diehard cross-country fan.
I know the path.
Good deal.
He would get to that spot before our son would and yell at him.
So yeah, yeah, we'll continue to incorporate them and wherever we can into the design with, so they can be sure to get to their spots.
I, um, I almost feel like, and Dr. Campbell and I have referred to this, a clock ticking in my head because we have a really, um, a great group of parents right now that, uh, support this, have the resources, have the connections. Um, but unfortunately, when your kids graduate, then you're, then you kind of lose that steam and lose that momentum. So that's why, and I might be one of them. I've got four years, but that's why I have this clock in my head. And that's kind of why I'm trying to go full steam ahead. And, um, I'm, I'm hoping that I can stress that to you, that your support is critical. And to get this done, we, we need your support in all areas. Like I said, talking about it. And that is my goal, to get this done. My, our youngest is.
I agree with you, but I also want to say thank you for those that have, you have had a lot of support.
Yes, for sure, for sure. I, I, yes. I would be remiss if, if I didn't say that.
Thank you.
Yes. But our youngest is in eighth grade, so my hope is that he plays baseball. Sorry, Dr. Campbell, that that probably won't work out for your son, but we're hopeful that he even has a field he can, that they can practice on. Um, so I just want to sum it up with that, that we appreciate your support and hopefully we can continue to count on it.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. Good luck to get after it.
Appreciate it.
And. Okay, superintendent, moving on to, I understand no transportation update. So moving on to school performance, student outcomes and academics.
All right. Uh, we, at the request of the board, um, we are going to talk this evening about, uh, Montague County Schools visitor and volunteer procedures. Susan.
Hi.
Can you just do that conversation?
Yes. So thanks for inviting me here tonight. We're going to talk about visitors and volunteers. I am Susan Taylor, the coordinator of student programs and community resources. So the first thing I would like to do is go over per our policies for visitor and volunteer, what a definition of a volunteer is and what a definition of a visitor is.
Excuse me, could she get closer? I'm having a hard time hearing her.
All right.
What do you want me to do?
Pull, pull the mic up a little bit maybe? That might help.
Is that better?
It doesn't.
It doesn't help her?
Oh, well, she, she's at the podium, Nancy.
Yeah, that's why I did know if we could give her a microphone maybe, and then stand closer to the telephone. I can hear the machine. I know it's always very.
Uh, yes. No, 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 you can't plug it. Yeah, 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 yeah.
You're moving Nancy. You're out.
Thank you. That's fine.
Thank you. Hopefully that'll help. I'll talk.
Now Nancy.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll start with visitor. A visitor is defined as any person seeking to enter the school building or grounds who is not an employee of Montague County Schools, a board member, or a current student in Montague County Schools. A visitor is an individual whose actions do not rise to the level of a volunteer. So then that leads us to a volunteer is defined as an adult eighteen years or older serving in an unpaid position who has direct volunteer contact with children. A volunteer is any person contributing time, energy, or talent that benefits the school on a regular basis. And the regular basis is the key point here for the difference between a visitor and volunteer. So we'll move into the next slide and delve a little bit deeper into the differences of visitor and volunteer. A visitor is not required to take the yearly training, nor are they a mandatory reporter for child abuse. Whereas a volunteer is required to take the yearly training, which is our policy training, and is a mandatory reporter. A visitor is always going to be supervised. A volunteer, there are two types. Ninety-five percent of our volunteers are supervised, but we have a very small five percent that is unsupervised. And for a visitor, they be, may be an event attendee, an academic support. That could be somebody coming from the university that is a supervisor of a student teacher. Whereas a volunteer is going to be helping with the event. So they're actually supporting the event or the school, office, teacher, and the classroom. When we're talking about volunteers and the volunteer training that they have to do yearly, it's very heavy with the policies. So there's five policies, one of which is our volunteer policy. We also have the expected behavior in safe and supported schools. We have confidentiality, student abuse and neglect. And then we also have Megan's Law. So they will take these, this training every single year. And here we have the training at your seats. This is the handout that is provided at the office for potential volunteers at all of our schools. This also mirrors our website. So whatever you're seeing on the handout is an exact duplicate of what's on the website. So we're going to go to the website now. And the very first link that you see on the right, you'll see on the left is just the details, just like that's in the handout of all the requirements that they need to do. On the right, the very first link is the training directions, which is, um, what, what the handout is. If you go back, then we have the training presentation. So this is the link that they would click to view the volunteer training for the policies. And it's a PDF. So it's going to work on any device, phone, computer, whatever, the mobile device they're using. Every policy is linked. Um, there's also a video for Megan's Law. It's about twenty minutes that they would watch to get the training for Megan's Law. Then if you go back, we're going to also click the check for understanding quiz. So within the presentation, the training, they would have the link to the volunteer quiz. And on that quiz, they're going to provide some information that's important to the school. One, their name. Next, they're going to provide their date of birth and their license. And then they're going to select the school or schools that they would like to volunteer at. And then it's the ten question check for understanding that they would take after the training. They have to get eight out of ten to be approved. They can take it as many times as they wish, but once they click submit, their score is revealed. And then the next steps of what they need to do will, it'll tell them what they need to do, which would be go to the school, complete the volunteer application, and provide their driver's license. Each school, this is housed in a database. So each principal and assistant principal has access to this database. Only the approved volunteers are in the database, um, once they have taken the training. So back to the presentation. Oh, the last two links, we don't need to look at, but one is the volunteer application that they would complete and fill out. Again, just contact information and the principal signs off on that. And then the last two, volunteer and visitor, are the policies and just different procedures with explicit definitions, like I went over on the first slide, with even more details of what a volunteer is versus a visitor. Okay, back to the presentation. So who is volunteering? Now we get to look at who is in our schools. So out of the eleven thousand, um, oh, no, one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven volunteers that we have to date, nine hundred and thirty-six are parent and guardians, seventy-two of those are grandparents, sixty-one of those are college students, and forty-six are other. Other could be additional family members, aunts, uncles, older siblings, and community members. But as you can see, our biggest category would be our parents and our guardians. So the types of volunteers, remember we said visitors are always going to be supervised. So, um, the two types of volunteers that we have are supervised and non-supervised. No matter what category they fall into, they will always work directly with school personnel to determine where they're, what they're doing and what assignments they have. But a supervised one will be, and have a direct person that they talk to, whether that's the classroom teacher, administrator, or appropriate school personnel. And the volunteers who are supervised are not required to submit the background check that you can see that the non-supervised would have to provide. They have to provide a background check and a TB time test. If you're wondering who might be a non-supervised, that is typically our WVU students and student teachers that come into our building. The impact that our volunteers have, you can see, here's all the categories and types of things that they would do when they would come into our buildings. One of which is events. And you can see that that's field trips, field days, book fairs, dances, community service projects, all activities that make our schools even better. But we would not be able to perform these without the help of volunteers. We also have the school and office category where they would help with parent committees, office and library activities, as well as our watchdog committee. And then we go into the teacher and classroom support. This could be classroom helper. Lots of STEM help here because STEM is very hands-on. So it's nice to have volunteers in our rooms for hands-on, read aloud, and our band and choir. And then last but not least is our student teachers, tutors, and interns that come in from the different universities and colleges. So you can see the chart at the top, twenty twenty-two, that is post pandemic. So that was the first year that I was in this position. And we had that little pause at the beginning, even though we were back in schools, we weren't just opening our doors to everyone. So that six-ten that kind of represents everything towards the end of that school year, mostly for field trips and field experiences. Last year, our total of people that passed the training was one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four. And to date, as of today, we're up to one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven that have completed the training. And just to end to show our appreciation, like I said, a lot of the events would not be possible without the hands of our volunteers. So volunteers are the backbone of every community. Their selfless dedication and tireless efforts uplift and strengthen our schools and the entire community, leaving a lasting legacy of compassion and support for all. So there's our visitors and volunteers. It's been, um, it was done before me. And then we worked together with Teresa to make the process even more simplified for everyone. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Clarification, you talked about the license, driver's license?
Yes.
Just for the public, they can volunteer even if they don't have a driver's license.
Usually work with your, um, school administration will help.
Okay, Susan, I have some specific questions.
Okay.
So a read-aloud person, are they a visitor or now volunteer?
Well, if they're coming in as a one-time read-aloud, sometimes we have, um, an organization that wants to come in for one day to do a read-aloud or a celeb, a celebrity, like we would call it, maybe a sports person would come in and do it one day. That would be more of a visitor. If you're coming on a regular basis to do read-aloud, then you're going to come in every, or you would be a volunteer.
So you would be a volunteer?
Yes.
The people that we approve on our personnel list, those are volunteers that have gone through the process to do a specific job.
I think what.
Uh, you know, we approve them for band or athletics, different things.
Those would be your chaperones. So they are a level above or, you know, on the hierarchy of what we're talking about visitor, volunteer, and chaperones. They do a.
Okay.
They also take the volunteer training. So they'll go through the whole process, have to do the check for understanding, provide all their information to the school. to do the check for understanding, provide all their information to the school. In addition to, they contact Mary Abate, and they do additional, provide additional information. Sometimes it's the background check and the TB time test, and then they get board-approved and are on the list for chaperones.
Okay, my last question. So if you're someone who goes in to do a party, and it's a, you know, twice a year, are you a visitor? Because you're observed by the teacher. I mean, you're not alone with the students.
Yeah. Well, any volunteer is going to be probably supervised. All visitors are supervised. So the best way to distinguish between the two, if you're attending the party as a guest, like a parent's just coming in, or a grandparent, or if you're helping, those that are part of the PTO or part of those types of committees would be a volunteer. If you're just attending, just to be an attendee with your child, then you're just a visitor. No matter what, I don't know if I said this, but no matter what they are to check in, visitor, volunteer, chaperone, whoever enters the building, is to go to the office, sign in, get a badge, and then sign out when they leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are we good?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Yes, I can hear you.
You're flying across, you're flying across the room.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent, discussions, follow-up action.
All right. Next on our list this evening, we do have with us from the city of Morgantown, the Assistant City Manager, Emily Musarelli, and she is here to request from the board a temporary right of entry and construction easement. So. Nancy, let me know if you can hear.
Um, so hopefully the temporary construction easement was shared with you all, but essentially what the city of Morgantown is requesting is, uh, access to, uh, treat invasive species along the Decker's Creek corridor. So this would be closer to MHS, um, the property that the Board of Ed owns, um, along Decker's Creek. It would just be primarily on the banks, and we would be looking at accessing that primarily from either the trail side, on the opposite side of Decker's Creek, or actually, uh, hopefully from within the Decker's Creek itself. Uh, we don't anticipate needing to access through the property. Uh, but this would be, again, to treat invasive species. If you've been on Decker's Creek, uh, probably in the last couple of weeks, you might notice some vegetation is starting to brown and die. Uh, that, we did do our first, um, spray of herbicide to go after the invasive species on, uh, the north side of Decker's Creek, off, all the way from, uh, the river to essentially currents crossing. Uh, so this would be asking for, I believe it is set up for a three-year agreement, because, uh, invasives are invasive for a reason. They are, come back consistently. So that we would be looking at, um, spraying, uh, once, if not multiple times a year, in trying to tackle these invasive species. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yep, I'll go ahead and make a recommendation. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the temporary rights of entry and construction easements.
So we motion, so move. Second?
Second.
I'm getting Dan on second. Okay. Any questions from the board members?
Just out of curiosity, what kind of invasive species is it?
Uh, it's Japanese knotweed. Uh, so they have kind of, uh, almost bamboo-looking, uh, stems. They're kind of, I call them crunchy, but a little bit woody, and they have very big broad leaves, and, uh, they're very, um, they tend to be in wet areas. So, uh, we did a pretty large project, um, closer to the river, and also, uh, some Japanese knotweed, some tree of heaven along, um, the wharf area, but up and down Decker's Creek cuts a lot of that Japanese knotweed. So it's, it's big, it's brushy, it takes over everything. Um, if you've been towards, uh, any of the kayak launches, they're kind of in that area. So it's just, uh, so we would be, uh, spraying it, and then about a month later, we would be working with volunteers to, um, cut it.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, and if you don't know, that's fine. What's the chemical?
I knew you were going to ask that, and I looked back. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but we are working with All-Star Ecology, uh, and they are certified pesticide herbicide applicators, uh, and they are working, obviously, with the sensitivity to being, you know, at a water source. So they go through the process and get the permits with all the water, uh, folks to ensure that, that what they're actually putting on there. I can definitely follow up with that, but it's kind of a broad base that tackles a lot of invasive species.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I have a pond, and I know there's a lot of chemicals that you can spray, and it takes care of what you're trying to get rid of, but it also is safe on the fish and-
That's why your frogs are so big.
Yeah, so I can pull frogs up. Anyway.
Yeah, so-
I was just curious if there's something different to you guys who are using them.
Um, they do, uh, take some consideration, obviously, both where they spray. That's why it's important to have a certified applicator. That way they can be a little bit more confined about where they go, um, and just how they're spraying it to limit, um, how much gets into the waterway. But that is part of what they use, kind of safer aquatic, uh-
I know some of it's supposed to be droplets laying on, and then other ones you sprayed at the roots and those types of things.
Yes, yeah.
How often, over the course of a year, do they treat and pool? Like, is it once a year that you spray and then volunteers go out, or is it monthly?
So probably at first, it'll be, um, twice a year, I would guess. So we just did one in the fall. So if you're in that area, and everything looks kind of brown and dead a little bit earlier than it would have been, that is from our initial application. So I believe, um, early to mid-November, we will be looking to work with volunteers, hopefully, to cut that and just, uh, kind of cut and leave on place, and then it'll slowly break down. Um, and then we will be looking at going back in the spring, and that's the first time likely we would be doing, um, one on, on the Board of Ed's side. Uh, but then, again, because it's invasive, we probably will do another one in the fall, but if we do those three kind of in quicker succession, we're hoping that we can go to just once-a-year kind of maintenance.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the temporary right of entry and construction easement as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? All right, spray away. Go get them. Superintendent, accounts payable.
Okay, uh, first is accounts payable addendum A. This is an action item. Vice President Kelly's going to recuse himself from the vote, and he'll step out of the room.
I must recuse because I have a business relationship with this vendor.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum A as presented in your executive file. Need a motion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of accounts payable addendum A, signify by aye.
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 Opposed the same?
You heard it.
Barely. Have to use the gavel. Okay. Okay, Superintendent, that's the words of contracts.
Yes, uh, the first one is for our EV charging stations. Uh, again, this is an action item for you this evening. And if you look at your executive content, uh, you can see the bid tabs there. Superintendent recommends that the board approve E Solutions with a base bid of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-two cents, including alternate one, uh, which is the one-year service agreement for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and including alternate two, which is the twenty-four-month warranty, uh, for a price of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, uh, with the project to be completed in three hundred and thirty calendar days.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right. Questions or comments on the board? The public, the location is?
At the Transportation Department, at the bus garage.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the EV charging station? Give me a second. Awarding to E Solutions as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Thank you, Superintendent.
All right, next is, uh, our North Elementary Stair Tower and Connector, uh, project. Again, uh, this is an action item, uh, for you this evening. Uh, and you can find your bid tab, uh, in your executive content. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Veritas Contracting LLC, uh, for a base bid of two million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, to include alternate number one, the exterior classroom, uh, at a price of sixty-two thousand, one hundred dollars.
Okay, need a motion?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
We only had one bidder.
Uh, yes, that was it.
Yeah. One responsive. Any questions or comments? Uh, all in favor of North Stair Tower and Connector, uh, being awarded to Veritas Contracting LLC, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is our Suncrest Center demo. And again, uh, you can see the bid tabs in your executive content. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Reclaim Company LLC, uh, at a base bid of one hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, to be completed in sixty calendar days. Uh, there are no subcontractors. It will be self-performed.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Um, my only question is, the day, um, is that a concern? Because we had done the bid thirty days, some fifty, and then our midwinter was sixty.
All right, uh, Amanda just went to the podium there, Ms. Nancy, so you want to repeat that?
I said, is there a concern over the calendar days?
We allow the contractors-
I mean, I, I would hate to think there's going to be piles of stuff for sixty days sitting around.
Uh, when we bid it, we allowed the contractors to tell us how many calendar days they would need to complete the job. That's starting, mobilizing, to completing. Um, I don't foresee things being laying around. I foresee them, uh, demoing and taking things off-site, but we can definitely work with them, uh, and make sure that that doesn't become an issue.
Any other questions, Nancy? Did you hear that explanation?
Yes, yes, I heard that explanation.
This, this, the, this company's a local company, does a lot of good work around Morgantown. So, I mean, I knew the company, so I don't think you'll have an issue. Uh, and if we do, I'm sure that won't be, that'll be addressed, so. I was comfortable with the name, if that was your question, if you didn't recognize it.
Sixty days seems quite reasonable to get rid of all that stuff.
Sixty, sixty days, Nate, when we're talking about something where it's going to, they need to have some good weather for recompaction and stuff, it's better to give them a little bit more time, instead of rushing them. I think it's going to be more critical that we have a site that's usable eventually, uh, without much of additional work than it would be to get done in thirty days. And it's a considerable difference to the thirty day, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think we're good. I think I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, if that's the question. I know that wasn't your direct question, but being in the industry. Any other questions, comments, board members? Okay, all in favor of the Suncrest Center Building Demolition and Green Space, uh, being awarded to Reclaim Company LLC, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Uh, we definitely want to get a hold of it and make sure that the city and the neighborhood's aware of what's going on here, because they're going to be, I know you guys have been, uh-
I've been communicating directly with Mayor Celine, uh, as to, uh, the process. She's aware that you were, uh, going to vote on a recommendation this evening. I'll be working, uh, with her. Her staff is going to then work directly with Teresa, uh, in relation to getting out information to the community, uh, as to schedules and, and things of that nature. So, uh, we've been, we've been working with them on a routine basis.
Anticipated notice to proceed?
Uh, don't know yet.
It's going to be-
As, as soon as you allow.
We have, we have some, a couple other things that we've been working with the city on as far as possible training opportunities. And, uh, I did speak with Mayor Celine today. Um, she said they were putting plans together, and I, I did tell her that, that, uh, the company was going to be ready to move, uh, as quickly as possible. So she was going to relay that to both the Police Department and the, and the Fire Department.
Should have kept Emily a little longer. She's a source there. She's hot. All right. Well, um, did we vote on it? We did vote on it, okay. Moving on. Superintendent, any comments, new contracts?
All right, for the first contract for your approval this evening is, uh, the Suncrest Middle Construction Project, uh, with Veritas, uh, that you had accepted their bid previously. This is the actual contract, uh, for your action this evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Suncrest Middle Veritas Contract as presented in your executive file.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Now seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the Suncrest Middle Veritas Contract as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Sorry, Nancy. Okay, Superintendent, moving on.
Okay, next is our Board of Education Audio and Video Agreement with Preston Videography. Um, and again, this is an action item for this evening. Uh, Danny Sims, uh, will now be taking over the Board of Education account as Preston Videography. Um, this is a contract with him, presented in your executive file. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the contract with Preston Videography.
Need a motion?
Second.
Good.
Wherever I am.
Good, thank you. I get, I get, uh, Jen, and then Nancy is the second. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, favor of the BOE Audio-Video Agreement as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Superintendent, consent.
Danny, you're still in business. All right, thank you. Okay, we're down to our consent agenda this evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include, uh, item A, expenditures exceeding three thousand dollars, item B, payment of salaries and accounts payable, item C, supplements and transfers, item D, the Kunkel Consulting Agreement, item E, the Marshall University Memorandum of Understanding, item F, our, our field experiences, and item G, the minutes of your previous meeting.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments, board members?
I have one, if-
Go ahead.
I want to hear it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. It's about the field experiences. I am all about supporting athletes and their endeavors, but the university high school wrestling team is going to miss a lot of days. And as we all heard in the attendance, uh, discussion, part of what they talk about is ten days a year is, you know, a, a large amount that can lead to sometimes some academic challenges. And there's an awful lot of cool days that we're missing here. So I just, we've had this discussion for years, as what is the appropriate amount? So I didn't know if anybody had any comments on any of that. So I didn't know if anybody had any comments on any of that.
Nancy, just from my perspective, they do miss quite a bit of school. I've been through that, I've been part of it. But I do know that the administration and the coaching staff are very diligent in working with the students and reminding them of their obligation academically, as well as providing parents with this type of information upfront. I know the school provides this information, the schedule, well in advance. And they do leave open the option that none of the athletes have to participate if their parents or they do not want to make any of these trips. But I also agree that there's a significant amount of school days that are taken out on some of these trips where they're going to multiple-day tournaments that require them to stay overnight. So I would certainly acknowledge your concerns.
Well, and I think part of what the, during the attendance in-service that everybody went to in the school system, it isn't always the student that's not there that's affected. It's sometimes it's the dynamic of the whole classroom and the perception of other students. Of favoritism or other things that can just create a difficult, more difficult atmosphere. So, I mean, and I know that this coach and the staff that has worked on these trips, there's actually a couple additional trips I noticed on this for the wrestlers this year other than the typical that we always were requested. So, I guess I'm just throwing that out there that, you know, if you're involved in any other sport or any other academic activity or band or something that takes you out, I mean, some of these students would be at 10 days just from that, never being sick. So, I just thought it was a lot of days for one activity, but.
The only item, or part I want to bring up, which I've brought up for years, is they're traveling with parents. I just want to make sure that the parents, in other words, if they're traveling with their own parents, that's fine. I know I've said this before, but do we have anything as far as our legality of them signing off? It's okay that my child rides with Dan and his, you know? I just want to make sure that parents know, because some of them may think that we're furnishing the transportation if they're not really paying attention where their child is going. I just want to make sure that, at the very least, that everybody knows who's riding with who and how they're going to get there.
We do have a transportation policy for private vehicles. In fact, we just worked on it last week, I think. But that is shared with the coaches who are requested to share that information at their annual parent meeting as part of the information that they must share with those parents. I am confident that Coach Mizell does that, having attended his parent meetings in the past.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, they're basically given carte blanche as far as my kid can ride with anybody that's a parent of another player? Is that, I mean, how does that agreement work?
Jennifer, according to the policy, how do we? They have to get permission?
I think that's, all of that is actually in the administrative guidelines.
Yeah.
So the policy itself talks about who's allowed to drive, but I would have to pull up the administrative guidelines.
Right. I know there's sign-offs, I mean, they have to sign off. It has to be, you have to gain permission in advance. So they're not really given carte blanches to just ride with whoever they want to ride.
That was my only concern, because if something happens, I didn't know they were going to ride with another parent. I thought they were going to ride with whoever.
There should not ever be an instance where a parent does not know who is transporting their child, according to our policy and our guidelines.
I just want to make sure that our coaches are following all that, too. Okay, that's all, you don't need to look it up.
Well, I just want to add what Nancy asked here. I mean, having taught at both high schools and teaching student athletes who go on these trips, I've never had an issue of a student not completing work. I've never had an issue of where there was favoritism. I don't know where that came from. I've never witnessed that. I think this is a great experience for these students to go out and compete outside the state of West Virginia. And I just know that they're going to do the work, what's expected of them. And it's even easier now with everything, with a lot of many things online.
When they have to maintain a GPA, right.
Again, from past history, I can tell you that on these trips, Coach Mizell requires a study hall.
Yes, yes, he does.
They have to maintain a GPA to wrestle anyway, correct?
That is correct.
2.0, not just a GPA.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Everybody has a GPA.
A passing GPA. Maintain a passing grade.
Technically better than passing.
Well.
They're just after you, aren't they?
If you ask me, I would bump it up, but.
All right, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
All right, we do have an early graduation request for you to act on this evening. The information is in your executive file. Superintendent does recommend that the Board approve the early graduation request.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the early graduation request, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same?
Aye.
Nancy was an aye?
I am an aye, and I hate to say it, guys, I'm signing out, so.
Thank you for coming.
You're not going to stick around for all the policies, Nancy?
No, I am not going to stick around for the 20 policies.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for calling in.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Board member updates?
I'll keep mine short for the Empiog. I've kind of kept you abreast of the Southern Bridge and all that kind of stuff. But a good thing is, is I think we are going to get a traffic control device at exit 155 where our buses would get off and have to turn left to up there. Hopefully, next spring is when it's going to be in the works. So, out of all the other stuff that we've been dealing with, when that one came up, that was the one that was important to me. And I think that'll really enhance, and I think it's going to help that whole area through there, even the other side. I'm not sure if they'll put a light on the other side of it, but on that side, it's definitely, the engineers have basically signed off but agreed that lights needed there, even though they're going to redo that whole thing. But that's, we need the disnow, so. I think a lot of the public will appreciate it, because you're turning left to go to Mile and Park. There's a lot of, it's not just our buses, it's, you know, all the stuff's going on up there. So I'm sure in my report, I'm done.
I'll say that there was a great turnout last, was it Friday? At the MTEC for the advisory group. Lots of community members, lots of interested partners. And hopefully, there'll be a big turnout at the meeting on Thursday for the Renaissance Academy, because we invited them all to sign in and gave them all access to how to do it. And I believe MTEC is sending everybody there an email. Is that correct, Teresa? An email's being sent to all of them with the link?
Yes, and the link is actually on the page.
Right, and we gave them all a pamphlet so they had the QR code, so. Hopefully, you'll have a big group that day.
We're hoping.
I was at that same event, and I got asked five minutes before I got there if I'd give a speech about the Renaissance Academy. And I gave a speech about making time to prepare for a speech, how important that was and knowing your content. And I said to both, I said, one, I didn't have time, and two, I don't know my content. I said, I know what we're doing, I know the vision of what we're doing. And I pushed out that the vision of the Renaissance Center is still so open to what the community needs, and it's almost easy to talk about, because it's literally-
Blank canvas.
Yeah, the blank canvas for education, collaborative education with the community, that is a vision that's going to change education for the next 50 years. It's going to be an absolutely awesome thing for Montague County Schools. And like I said, it was a five-minute preparation for a speech that went very well, because there's really nothing, nothing's known now. And if I would have went up and said what it was going to be, I would have been, you know, misspoken. I would have almost said, don't come to these meetings, because I already know what it's going to be. So it's such an open discussion. And that partnership with the community that you guys have built in this administration is excellent. So it was great to go to MTEC. The MTEC's Advisory Committee, MTEC, what they're doing over there is absolutely phenomenal. It's, they are pulling those kids in, getting those kids involved. The staff is excited, it's just such, it's such an exciting place right now. And it was an honor, actually, to go over there and be part of that whole thing, so. Anything, Dan?
No.
Okay.
Nothing here.
Okay, let's do some policies.
Okay, we do have quite a few this evening. So let's get started. First is Policy 8510, this is for introduction. This is our wellness policy. Jennifer?
This is in response to Senate Bill 246, which required water bottle filling stations to be installed. We talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. But this just addresses the policy for students to carry water bottles to school with, any school with a water bottle filling stations.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Moving on.
Next is Policy 8510.01, Child Nutrition Standards. Again, this is the first time you've seen this, Jennifer.
This policy addresses food insecurity. So it permits school districts to survey the public school students about their eating on non-instructional days, remote learning and virtual school days, and their availability of nutritious food when schools are closed so that the schools can address any needs identified in the survey. There it is. Timely.
Board members? All right, any questions or comments? We'll move on to C. Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, this is Policy 8660, Transportation of Student by Private Vehicles.
So this is a timely policy?
I said it was a very timely policy.
Just want to make sure we focused on it.
So, yes, this is, we just discussed this a little bit. This is in response to House Bill 4380. Now remember that we're lagging a little bit here. So this did address the seating capacity in vehicles that were transported by students. So it does take out some language about the seating capacity. And as you can see there, this says that any transportation of students in a private vehicle for school or Board of Education purposes or activities must be approved in advance and in writing by the school principal. And then it does make reference to the Superintendent's administrative guidelines on that. And then it also goes into who can be approved for the transportation of students in private vehicles.
This doesn't cover to it from school, correct?
That's correct.
Just covering over bases.
Okay. Superintendent, moving on.
All right, the next three are for first reading. You have seen these policies once before. So first is Policy 4220, Staff Evaluation. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 4220 for first reading.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm second.
You have two seconds.
I'm second. I'll say mine.
Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of Policy 4220, Staff Evaluation for First Reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same?
Next is Policy 7100, Facilities Planning. This is also for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 7100 for first reading.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of Policy 7100, Facilities Planning for First Reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
Next is Policy 8450, This is Control of Casual Contact Communicable Diseases. This is for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 8450 for first reading.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of Policy 8450, Control of Casual Contact Communicable Diseases for First Reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
Okay, our next group of policies will be for second reading and adoption this evening. So first is Policy 3132, Vacancies Professional Positions. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 3132 for adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
We have any comments?
We did not.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, all in favor of Policy 3132, Vacancies Professional Physicians for Adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Thank you, Superintendent.
Jennifer, just to clarify, I don't think we had comments on any of these.
We did not.
We did not.
Okay.
Next is Policy 4132, Vacancies Service Positions. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 4132 for adoption.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments in the Board? Okay, all in favor of Policy 4132, Vacancies Service Personnel for Adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Only four more to go.
Next is Policy 3139.01, Suspension. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 3139.01 for adoption.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor of Policy 3139.01, Suspension for Adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
Next is Policy 4139.01, Also Titled Suspension. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 4139.01 for adoption.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of Policy 4139.01, Suspension for Adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same?
Next is Policy 3213, Student Supervision and Welfare by Professional Staff. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 3213 for adoption.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor of Policy 3213, Student Supervision and Welfare by Professional Staff for Adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? One more.
This is Policy 4213, Student Supervision and Welfare by Service Staff. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve Policy 4213 for adoption.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of Policy 4213, Student Supervision and Welfare by Service Staff for Adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Let's do something fun. Personnel.
That's fine.
Superintendent?
Jennifer, I kind of like doing this.
This is kind of your checkered flag when they hit that.
Okay, personnel. We do have two changes I'd like to ask you to make this evening on your agenda. First, on page 2, line 37, please change the effective date to- First, on page 2, line 37, please change the effective date to 11/14/2023. On page 3, line 43, I would also ask that you change the effective date to 9/29/2023. With those two changes, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? All in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Superintendent?
I do have two new positions that I would like the board to approve this evening. The first of those is a new, a pre-K special needs teacher, 200 days full-time at Mountain View Elementary School. That's a plus-one for the county. And obviously with that, I would ask that you approve the addition of an ECAT 2 aide, also 200 days full-time at Mountain View Elementary School. And also that is a plus-one for county. Superintendent recommends that the board approve those two new positions.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. What's this, where does that put us as far as head count total?
You mean as far as our enrollment?
No, no, as far as are we over, under?
Oh, oh. You mean as far as total, like the certified list?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we're always over.
I know, that's what I was going to say. I didn't know how much, how far we're...
We're still working through a good bit of it, but we're going to, we're probably going to come in, if not a hair above where we normally are, which is about 100 positions.
Okay.
We might be a little bit over that.
I just want to, just wondering, but we're still hovering around 100.
Nicole will work her magic and massage, you know, those kind of things. But I think we're, in our conversations, we're probably right where we have been. We're close.
Okay, that's all. Years ago, we were like 116 or something like that.
I hope we're not that much. But you never know.
All in favor of the new positions as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Superintendent?
All right, I don't have any changes to your addendum. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the personnel list addendum, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Thank you. Superintendent's evaluation. This process has been, has been going on for a little while. We finished this up with the state's survey instrument. And what we're going to report out is what we talked about, which would have been a month ago, is the goals for the superintendent. I think I'm going to read those into the record and then we can have comments or questions or we can just, or we can just move on because we have worked on for this for quite a while, so. Okay, the Montague County Board of Education believes that Dr. Eddie Campbell has successfully met the expectations established for him during the 2022-2023 school year. And we have set some goals for the upcoming school year. As we look ahead to the current school year, the superintendent and the Board of Education have developed a set of goals that they believe align with the overarching mission and vision of Montague County Schools. These goals are intended to guide our effort, inspire continuous improvement, and ensure that Montague County Schools remain a beacon of excellence beyond the borders of West Virginia. Number one goal... Did I say something?
She's... Sorry.
Number one, student-centered excellence. The superintendent will continue to expand his role as instructional leader in leveraging, in leveraging his position as the face of Montague County Schools to lead our community to save our schools in increased academic rigor in pursuit of excellence while continuing to recognize the needs and challenges of our students. To improve personalized learning opportunities, he will lead the development of our future curriculum in STEM and career tech education by engaging with our internal and external stakeholders, community and industry to garner input support for designing and funding the Renaissance Academy with the ultimate goal of passing a bond referendum May 14th of 2024. Parent and community engagement is the second goal. He will continue to develop new school system communication pathways with our families and community stakeholders in order to foster trusting relationships with our families and the greater community. He will take a more personal approach to training our staff to provide excellent customer service in all communication efforts. And the third goal is professional growth and wellbeing. He will continue to be visible at our schools, to engage our staff and students in support of their work and progress happening inside and beyond the classroom. So that is our, the evaluation process without goals and evaluation process without vision is just an exercise in futility. So the superintendent and his staff and this board has worked very hard to make sure that we're looking forward, never having where we're at. And this, and the performance over the last year has been, has been excellent. We're going in the right direction, I feel personally, so. If the board members have any additional comments they want to make, they can do so. And if not, we will just enter this into the record and...
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. You're an excellent board to work with.
Thank you. While we're sleeping. All right. Thank you, superintendent. Our next board meeting. This regular board meeting, meeting of the Montague County Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, November 14th here.
It's too close to have it.
I said that too fast, I don't even know if you could understand, but, all right. We're adjourned.